Good. All right. Welcome to the Coffee County School Board meeting for January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Have to make sure I get that right because I'm still writing twenty-four on my checks. But we have a quorum. Mr. Gilli is not going to be here tonight. Ms. Jones is going to be a few minutes late. And I have no idea where Mr. Cordell is. Have you heard from Mr. Cordell at all?
Haven't heard anything from him, no sir.
I just texted him and I, you know, so I don't know. I think he was, might have been confused on the change of dates too, so. So anyhow, we would like to go in on the meeting tonight. So we have a relatively short agenda with a couple of presentations. Our, our recognition had to reschedule for tonight due to a conflict, so we're not going to have that. So we'd like to start with Beth as offered to do the prayer.
Father, we come before you tonight and we're seeking your wisdom. In making the right decisions, we're seeking your wisdom for Dr. Powell. As he administers over this school system, we're seeking your wisdom for our teachers that go into that classroom every day. We're seeking your wisdom. Help us to make right choices tonight. We ask for your presence to be with us, for your peace to be in this place. And that whatever we do in this meeting would be something that would bring you a good report. And we just thank you for it in the name of your son, Jesus. Amen.
Thank you. Mr. Coon will lead us in the pledge.
Let us lead this. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And tonight, our student ambassadors are Addison McCullough, Trevor Jessie, and Davis McKenzie. So got a little mixing it up a little bit tonight. Usually it's all, all the women, so. So, so thanks for the guys for stepping in. All right, so we're going to dive into our presentation. We have two presentations tonight. The first is going to be Dr. Cornelius is going to give us an update on the TESA accountability report. So, Dr. Cornelius.
Hey. And I will speak to the TESA accountability goals. So this is what this will be geared toward. And this is your January update. Goal one with our third graders and their ELA. Right now, where we are is your elementary schools are using their wonders. That's the curriculum they use for ELA. They have a curriculum unit test that they benchmark all their students with. It's important to understand that those are standards-based testing, not skills-based. And that's important because they need to be focused on the standards rather than the skills in this to help us meet that goal that we need to get of the fifty-five percent proficiency this year in ELA. Then in February, about late February, then elementary schools will use SchoolNet. And it'll be a more comprehensive, standards-based assessment. It will give them a predictive score of where the students should be and show them any gaps that they may have in preparation for the TCAP in April. So the expectation would be naturally they'll use those results in February and, you know, revamp some instruction, fill in some gaps before the testing actually begins in earnest in April. So that's where elementary is right now. Middle school with their goals, the TESA accountability goal. Middle school uses a program called Mastery Connect to benchmark their students three times a year. They do that in all four subjects because they're responsible for all four subjects. They get the grades and the scores generated on that. I went over to the middle school and met with Dr. Anderson's team. And he showed me the Mastery Connect. And as a former high school math teacher, I was very impressed with it because it gives them a lot of real-time data, tells them where the gaps are, where the children are at that time. And then they have plenty of time to, again, fill those gaps in and tailor that instruction to that. Mastery Connect does a lot with the standards for the middle school. And it gives them data that they can work on and use, not just sit on a shelf. And I like that, too. I did on October the twenty-third, I provided every elementary principal and the middle school principal with historical testing data. I gave them access. I made a sheet and gave it to every one of them. I gave them the raw score, the scale score, and the performance level on all of their students in the building unless that student had not tested with us before. They have, they had every bit of that. And they were to distribute that to their staff and use it as they saw fit. I just simply provided the data and the tools, gave them the capacity to do that. The other one, let's see. High school, high school's accountability is the Ready Grad. Now, I will say that high school tested their seniors in ACT, did a senior retake in October. I got those results. I pulled those down sometime in early November. I was very impressed with that, too, because it was the first time I'd seen that many seniors jump to the twenty-one and above on their composite ACT. There were actually twenty-two of them that did that. And I didn't, as I was sifting through that, I thought, now wait a minute. And I looked, I thought, I hadn't seen that many before. So that was good because there's currently one hundred forty students out there that are meeting the Ready Grad goal right now. I suspect that will go up a little bit once transcripts are posted for semester one, still wrapping that up. And when they do, I'll be able to run my queries and my reports to see who's met some more EPSOs on the, at the high school level. And that way, we can add more to the Ready Grad pile than what we already have. So that, that's really good. And then the last thing, let's see. In my TESA folder in EIS, let's see, we have two hundred ninety-two thousand, one hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents that was generated for the, in the twenty-four spring testing for TESA outcome bonus. So at the district level, instructional leadership, we have met. And we've come up with some guidelines and things like that that we'll discuss at the principal's meeting tomorrow with principals and solicit their input, too, on some ways to spend that money with a, with a focus on TESA accountability goals and instruction, instructional-based initiatives. And that's it. And I'll give you another report in April, unless you have any questions.
So how, what's your feeling right now on, on hitting that fifty-five percent on third grade ELA?
Well, from what I've, from what I've seen, it's not unattainable. It is, I know I've talked to a couple of schools because I know a couple of schools for sure are using the data and using it properly. And you've got to remember that the TCAP itself for third grade on the ELA, it will go, it will, it will give you overall results of points that were available. The riding is worth sixteen points in and of itself on the third grade ELA TCAP. So hopefully, hopefully, they're focusing on the riding portion also and then bringing in the standards that relate to that. I do know that, I do know that the schools, like I said, the couple that I have seen, they're focusing on the standards versus the skills. The skills is taken care of at the intervention level, their RTI. That's skills-based. It's not curriculum. It's not standards-based. And I do know for a fact that, and I'll say the school, I'll say Hickerson. I went, I've gone out, I've gone out to Hickerson. I've seen what they're doing. And they are actually, they're doing something good because they're not rationalizing so much as, well, why did we get this? Why, what happened? It's like, these are our scores. We own it, so let's, let's improve now. And they're, they're, they've taken, they've taken that on. And they are using, they're using data folders for each student. They know exactly where every student in that building is right now. And then some of us are going to go over there and help the students and let them see that, too. So I do know from the two, the two schools that I've been in and observed, they are, they are using what they have, what they're given. I know that on a district level, too, Dr. Blessing, we have given them access to Pearson and some Pearson analysis and to help identify the bubble students, as we call them, where you can, with a little bit of effort, you can push them right on over. So I'm going to say that it is, I, I believe it is attainable. And I think they're going to do everything they possibly can do to meet that expectation. I feel very strong in that.
Any questions for Dr. Cornelius, though?
No. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next up is the presentation from Walt. And Mr. Shores, if you want to do the introduction and kind of lead in for that?
Sure. I believe Von Darks is actually going to be the one that's going to be doing the presentation. And we have the whole team here. So I think whenever he gets finished, you're welcome to ask some questions. And, and I'm sure one of them will be able to answer.
That's why I have a whole team, so I don't have to answer all the questions, right?
We're excited you're here. I've been looking for you.
Well, thanks for having us back. We're excited, too. I know that we probably have the longer presentation tonight. And I'm going to try and talk fast. I'm going to go through things at a high level. We will get you this presentation so you can get into the detail later. But if you have questions along the way, feel free to ask. So one of the things you asked us to do is evaluate. We have two additions we want to put on East Coffee and Hickerson Elementary. And when we start it, the easy thing to do would be you just throw an addition on. That's not a good way to design schools. And so we go back to the beginning. We say, how should schools be designed? What are we looking for? And we base a lot of that on sort of a version of Maslow's hierarchy of needs, where we look at physical conditions through capacity up into safety and security, house spaces, our educating students, all the way up into community use. There's a lot of data that we collect as part of this process. Some of it's very objective. It either is, it isn't. It's black and white. A lot of it is subjective when it comes to schools. And so there's things we can do in a vacuum. There's a lot of stuff that we do in discussion as we evaluate. But really, what we're trying to do is this. The RFP scope that you asked us to do was look at construction of an addition that's based on the model that you did at North Coffee New Union, renovation of, of the cafeteria, space for, into the former gym, adjustments to traffic, parking flow, and maybe some other things in there as well. So we're really trying to determine what the scope looks like. I can tell you additions by themselves, cost per square foot, are the most expensive thing you can build. So we're always looking to say, is there a way to do that differently? That's maybe more renovation, that has a different way of looking at the building, that corrects issues in the building. That's a more cost-effective way to do it and sets the building up better for what a, a great educational design to be. So that's really what we're trying to do here in this study. I'll start with physical conditions. So the first thing we do is we look at what are the maintenance and repair things you have to do in each building if you did nothing else? Just to see where you're starting with these buildings. And you can see you're just under about three million dollars in all the categories from site and civil work outside the building, building envelope, interior finishes, accessibility, mechanical and electrical systems. Do you have to do all that? No. Some of it's kind of optional in there. But if we looked at what are all the things that these buildings have and need, this is the maintenance work that would have to be done. And so this is sort of the base of where we're starting with the buildings themselves. This will be important when we talk about Hickerson because you asked us to look at, does it make sense to put an addition on Hickerson versus replace? And we want to make sure we're understanding these costs as what exists versus what a new building would be. Second thing we do is we look at the capacity of the building and it's a, how it's currently being used today. You have in both of your buildings here, they're what we call two-section buildings, meaning there would be two classrooms for each of the grades going through. They don't both operate that way right now currently. Hickerson actually has a four or five rotation, which is a common approach that you have if you don't have a full two-section for different grades. But we know that the buildings want to be able to hold that full two-section if necessary. We also know that in the buildings, you've got a lot of student and special services taking space in former classrooms, which are not designed for the use of that function, nor are they the appropriate size. They're oftentimes bigger in that case. We compared the size, excuse me, the capacity of the building with your enrollment projections as well as the other elementaries in the district. And for the most part, you have a two-to-three-section model. And we know that Hickerson especially is looking at some growth in the area. And we want a master plan for up to three-section because that's where your other elementary schools are as well. At this time, based on the enrollment projections and how the buildings are being used, though, we don't see the need to move either of these buildings beyond two-sections. So from an addition standpoint, that works well. But we want a master plan for that three-section as we go forward. And you'll see that in a little bit. I, like I said, I'm talking fast here. We'll get you this detail, but I just kind of want to walk you through each of the steps. Next thing we do is we look at the spaces themselves and say, compared to educational standards for size of the rooms as well as what's working well or not working well, how do your spaces stack up? And what we see here in this, in this chart is the right side is, if we were building new, how big would we make these spaces? And the other two buildings are compared there. Anything that's five to ten percent or more smaller than what the standard would be, we mark in pink or red. Anything that's greater than that, we mark in blue. And I think you can see a lot of the spaces in those buildings are undersized compared to what they would need to be. Some of the spaces you know about, that's what the RFP is, the kitchen, the cafeteria, the gyms, those need to be bigger. But we also see in there a lot of the administrative and the staff areas, a lot of the student and special services spaces as well. Classroom-wise, they're kind of right on the edge. You know, we usually like to see about eight hundred to nine hundred square feet. You've got a few spaces just slightly below that. But for the most part, the classroom size works well. And so we've got a good building block that we're starting from. Takeaway from this one is, we believe by renovating student and special service spaces, you'll get better use out of those areas and they'll be designed for the need as well as it'll free up space within the building. And the main office renovations could resolve a lot of proximity issues. You have people spread out all over the buildings right now. Be great to bring them together in the main office areas. We also wrote a program for what would a new elementary school look like. We knew this because we were looking at Hickerson to say, if we were designing a two-section building, what would that be? Works out to be, you know, just less than fifty thousand square feet, but we master planned that as well. We used those numbers when we were looking at that last chart. And this will come into play later in the presentation. We looked at safety and security issues in the building. You can see it's blurred out because we don't want to broadcast all that. But we're looking to see, are there major red flags here? There are not. Your buildings operate very well. You've addressed some of those things. There are things that we've done in other schools that we would suggest, if you want to consider this, do you want to look at that? And so as you would move forward, we'd bring us some of that information to the table as well. And we looked at the sites themselves. Now, now we're getting into the detail for this. East Coffee, it looks like, at first, that's the easier site to deal with. Got lots of room in front, got lots of room in back. What you don't have is a lot of room to the side. Using that, that North Coffee New Union model, we know it's pretty deep. You could build it out to the north side of that building, but you wouldn't be able to get any service vehicles back and you'd be right up against the property line. So we don't know that that makes sense. We think the addition's going to have to go either in the front, which also doesn't make a lot of sense from, are you going to put a gym in front of the main entry? Or in the back? We know that that's going to mean we're going to have to move some playground features, but playgrounds are the cheapest thing for us to, to move around. With the utilities work well there, would also allow a fire road access to go around the building if we put it towards the back. When we look at Hickerson, Hickerson's a little bit different story. Again, very tight when we look up to the north side of the site, a lot of room to the south. But there's a couple of factors that are coming into play here. The two entrance points to that parking lot in front, which is a mess, are not aligned with the roads. And anything that we do to change that would likely trigger us moving those drives, lining them up with city roads. There's also a significant grade drop down. The nineteen ninety-five addition sits up at least ten feet from the site around it and it drops off as it goes down from there. So that tells us additions out to the south probably don't make as much sense either. So we're really, again, looking at that backside of the building and saying, this is probably where it wants to go. But from there, we started to get into elementary design. Now, if we're looking at, if we're designing a new elementary, there's some basic rules of thumb that we use. First is, the admin wants to be right at the front door for a couple of reasons. One, it creates that secure vestibule. But two, they can see who's approaching the building. From there, you want your classrooms distributed evenly across the building. And we like to say, it's great if we can have the younger students in one area, the older students in another area, and balance them around the center of the building. Reason you want them balanced is so that your student services don't have to be down separate corridors or in an isolated part of the building. You want them integrated where the classrooms are. And then you want to put your specialists, like your media, your library, your, your lab spaces, central to the building. So everybody's got equal proximity coming into that. Gyms and cafeterias, you want to have isolated because they're noisy. But you also want to keep them as centrally located as possible and have the ability for you to secure that part of the building off from other areas if you want to use it on the weekends or at nights for different things. Circulation wants to be intuitive, wants to be really easy to stand in one part of the building and know where you're going to go if you're a parent coming to the building, for example. We want to be able to expand. So this is getting into that three-section model. We never want to build you into a corner where you don't have a logical way to expand it. And then finally, we want to take a look at safety and security lines in the building. Do we have a duress button in the office that we could lock down wings if we needed to? This model works really well in new elementary design, either in a radial concept or a linear. And your two buildings, East Coffee and Hickerson, are very much in that linear model. So when we start taking that last diagram, we lay it over the buildings and go, how could we reach that ideal concept? And that's really where we started looking at from a diagramming standpoint, how would we do this? So we put the bubble diagrams over the top of the building and said, if we're laying all this out, does it fit and how would it work? We can get very, very close to that with these existing buildings. One of the things we would do is from your RFP, we looked at what's the base model want to be? So bare minimum to meet your RFP, how would we do this? We believe we'd put gym, stage, music addition up to the north, but, or excuse me, top of this diagram, not north. We wouldn't build a media center with that. We think that we can renovate enough space in the building after you move music and some of the other spaces out into the new addition and renovate areas to create that special services space so we could expand the media center in place. So that's going to save some money as we take a look at that. There's enhancements that you could look at above and beyond that. To get to a full two-section model, we'd add two kindergarten and pre-K rooms. We'd also, from an administrative standpoint, it's a little bit tight in there. We think an addition off the front would bring it up to the right size. There's a former boiler room in that building that's not being used at all. We could renovate that for staff and meeting space. And that would free up the staff workroom, which is kind of small in that area for intervention space. So this would create really an ideal two-section building. Then from a future standpoint, we know how we can expand the classrooms. None of this prevents that from happening in the plan. It also keeps the, the ages really organized the way we want. Younger kids in the front of the building, third, fourth, fifth, towards the back of the building, equal proximity to the cafeteria and the, the stage. On the site, really somewhat easy to fix this site. The number one problem that we see is buses and parents same area. We can't train parents. We can train bus drivers really well, but it has to be intuitive for the parents. So what we would propose is to the north side of the site, creating a, a bus loop for five to six buses that would isolate the buses in that area and then have a dedicated drop-off pickup lane in the front and expand the parking from forty-two out to fifty-six. So this would allow the buses to come and go separate from the parents, creates a nice service drive access back towards that cafeteria area, gives you the option of building that fire road around the addition and would improve that parent pickup and drop-off so you could run them simultaneously instead of having the staggered ten-minute start that you have currently. Hickerson building works very similar to East Coffee in some ways, even though the classrooms are in a little different proximity. But we can get to that same building type diagram. So the base model here, unlike the other building, we do believe the media center needs to be built as part of the addition because your administration would be renovated into that media space and expanded. And there's, that's the ideal space for that in the front of the building. It's also exactly where you want it to be. You could enhance that by adding the steam room. The steam room right now is a space that if you have it, you use it. If you don't, you don't have it. And this being a steam program here, it would be ideal to say, we have the dedicated space for steam room. So we think building the steam room with that would make sense so that you could consolidate your special services at the center of the building, have your early childhood, pre-K, special K to one side, first grade next to the office, and then second through fifth as part of that nineteen ninety-five addition. And from a future planning standpoint, that gives you the room to expand your classrooms where you want them as well as add to your specialists as you go forward. Site here is a little bit more challenging. As I mentioned, out in front of the building, there's a couple of ways you could do this. You could simply clean that up by separating the parents and the buses in the face of the building. The least expensive way to do that still brings the buses through that parking lot and it doesn't expand the parking. Looked at a couple of options for that, but you're still only at about forty-two spaces. Ideally, we think you'd create that same bus loop to the side to the building and expand the front out to the fifty-six. So now you've got equity and approach between the two buildings with your addition off to the back as shown. Now, I know there was some preconceptions going into this about, we think the addition's going to go out to the south on this building. But there's a couple of reasons that we don't know that that makes sense. You're going to have to move playgrounds regardless in doing this, whether, no matter if you put it there or not. In this one, to extend the classrooms out in the future means they're going down that hill. And the gym is not centered to the building. It's way off to the side. And so all your students on the one side, your youngest, are going to have to go through the whole building to get over to the cafeteria and back. Could also take a look at doing it out to the south there, but you'd have to modify your property line. That addition's going to push out to the point where we can't get the service drive in and aligned with the road on the site like that. You could do the, either of these things, but we don't think it's the right idea and we don't think it lays the building out the best for the future. Once these additions would be done, same chart, all those spaces are now in alignment with a couple of small exceptions. I mentioned that we'd be renovating the media space at East Coffee. It's right up against that, but we think the cost savings is there. And if you're doing a renovation, you would not notice that missing hundred, hundred and fifty square feet. There's also those two classrooms at Hickerson that are right on the border of that. We think that that's in line with some of your other buildings. And you're using it right now for classrooms. It probably still makes sense to do that. So in this plan, these things work. Biggest question, what's this cost? So I mentioned there's a range to this and we looked at it this way. That base scope is the first number. That's sort of the bare minimum to get your cafeteria, your addition put on, get the office somewhat renovated, make those basic changes. Traffic modifications is the next line. Optional expanded scope at the bottom. That's what our recommendation would be. That puts each of these additions with the site work right around eighteen million dollars per building. Hickerson replacement. If we were to replace Hickerson on-site with where it is, at a forty-eight thousand, five hundred square foot building, we believe that cost is going to be in the neighborhood of thirty-five to forty million. Earlier, I'd mentioned that when I was here previously, if it's going to be more than sixty percent of what new construction would cost to do an addition, it's a no-brainer. You should do a new building. This is not there. It's pushing up against it. But what I will say is this, you've done this prototype on other buildings. We think if you do these things, Hickerson is going to operate just like a new building. It's going to be unbelievable with the modified traffic. I can't see that you would spend that money to put a new building on-site. I think it would make sense to have the addition. So that's where we are right now. This says draft because we still need to understand, how far do you want to take this? Do you want to say, is there a way to do this for a little less money? Yes, there is. Will it get as far as what the best design is? Maybe not, but that's not our call to make. That's something we would work through with you. Moving forward in terms of how long this would take, depending on when it would move forward, it's about seven months of design with about a month of building in there. And then we'd work backwards from when occupancy would want to be. We think the addition's probably about an eight-to-nine-month build-out. But we have to do those summer renovations and site work when students aren't in the building. Told you that's a lot of information to throw out here. I'm out of breath when talking so fast. What questions can I answer? And I'll go backwards to any slides.
I have a whole bunch of questions.
Okay.
All right. My first question is actually not exactly pertaining to that. But the main reason that I voted to hire you guys was because you told me you were going to talk to the staff and make sure that they had input. I want to know if you were able to have access to the staff and administration in order to do that.
We talked with the administration in a lot of this. The, working with the staff comes with, once design goes forward, that's when we do all those user group meetings on the spaces to say, how does this space specifically lay out? But we did work with the administration to look at, especially a lot of the, how do the student services spaces work? What's short in the building? Talked with the principals about how they're operating currently and worked with Kelvin and his team on questions. So at this point, we're at more of the administrative level. It would go to the staff level once design moved forward.
Good to know. Another question is, I was under the impression that we were making more classrooms at Hickerson now, not in the future. Do you happen to have price on those?
We can run the price, we can run the price for that if you wanted to take that all the way out to a three-section building.
I would like to know that. It seems kind of pointless to me to not have extra classrooms.
Yep.
If we're going this far already.
The reason these look like diagrams is because it's important for people to know this isn't set in stone. But we've taken this out to the next level and we have prices for what it would take to go to a three-section. but we've taken this out to the next level and we have prices for what it would take to go to a three-section building if that's what's needed.
Okay. I will let some other people ask some questions and then I'll maybe come back and do some more.
Okay.
Questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Uh, I never am really a proponent of building onto buildings that are ancient. And, uh, I know the present building has been renovated, but it's still just an old building. Uh, I thought we were gonna get to see a plan for a new building at Hickerson and the exact cost of that.
Uh, new building at Hickerson would be in the thirty-five to forty million dollar range. We, we don't design buildings in a vacuum. That's something that we believe we work with, uh, planning group from the community to design. If you wanted to design a new building, that's when we would engage for that, uh, in terms of what that looks like. Uh, I will say from a renovation standpoint, um, we've, the bulk of education work in the U.S. and most of what we've done is renovations and additions on buildings. And we believe making these investments.
Renovation, could you do them?
No, I'm only proposing that to try and keep the cost reasonable. But that's why we ran the number on the thirty-five to forty million dollars because we know a new building would fit on that site and we could do that if that's where you wanted to go with it. But the design would have to be more community-based from our perspective where we would work with the community as opposed to coming in and going, here's how you do this.
Well, I guess my question is if we did opt to go, cause that is an option.
Yes, it is.
Uh, where would the new building be? I mean, we need a kind of a, an estimate because the, the old building's sitting there, of course. And how would you build, how would you propose to build a new building on that plot?
We've done this a lot with, uh, with, uh, existing buildings, uh, because one thing we know is this has to remain in use during that entire time. We're still gonna have students there the entire proximity. We've built new elementary schools within ten feet of the existing buildings, uh, previously. And you have room on the site to do that. Does it mean we have to take down some trees to do that? Yes, it does. Does it mean we're gonna have to make some phasing approaches with the playground to do it? Yes. But there's enough room on this site to accommodate a new building. Uh, phase construction, uh, as soon as that building is complete, uh, we would move, uh, the furniture, the, the materials, the supplies over to the new building. That building gets demolished and the site work happens over the course of that summer to the point where it reopens.
And I guess that was my confusion is I, I, I was under impressions you were saying that where the renovation is going, that the rest of the property wasn't suitable for building. So the topography there is, is fine for it as long as the trees removed.
It is, um.
So there's plenty of space for a new elementary on that.
I went through the site fairly fast, but other than the, the hill, there we go. Other than the hill in front that slopes from the north side to the south, it's actually not that much of a grade change as you go towards the back of the site. The biggest issue there is there's trees and it's never, uh, nobody's ever happy when you take down trees. Understand why, but we can replant trees and you have the room on the site to do that here.
That's pretty much flat.
Mm-hmm. Uh, it's, it's not as big a slope. The biggest slope is down in this area as it drops off towards the front of the building.
There's not very many sites that you get, there's not.
Nope.
Ten-foot difference across the whole thing.
Yeah, it, it's about five feet from the playground all the way to the back corner of the site. So fits very well there.
It's pretty flat.
And the size site is appropriate, too. If the site was too small, we'd have some questions, but there's a lot of room for us to work with on that site if you decided to go with a new building.
So basically what we're looking at, we're putting height, the cost of a new building onto an old one.
I wish it was, I wish it was seventy percent because then it'd be really easy for us to say, yeah, it makes sense to do that.
That's, you know, but you gotta look at the future.
Yep.
As you looked over Hickerson, how concerned were you with what shape the building is in?
Physically, what shape the building's in?
Yeah, that was a part of your evaluation.
Uh, I will say that our team, that WAC that said, these buildings are actually in really good shape physically. Uh, less than three million dollars of maintenance pending in a building is not a very large number for buildings this size. So we were actually pleasantly surprised with what shape they're in. I will say there is one item on this that shows up in code in that these buildings do not have sprinkler systems in them. It's not required right now, but that, what that means is every time you put an addition on, you have to separate the addition from the other part of the building through, uh, basically corridor space and then have separation walls between the two. So it does limit how you approach that addition, but that's how you've done it at your other buildings as well. We would recommend you, uh, you put the life safety, uh, system in place for that because it gives you some more options with what you might do for the addition to that, but not necessary.
We've also, we've also captured that number in the maintenance cost for the addition of sprinkler system.
Okay. For the whole building or just the addition?
For the whole building.
Okay.
So all the, the issues of lead-based paint and, uh, any kind of issue that comes, environmental issues in that old building have been mitigated?
Uh, to the best of our knowledge, they've been mitigated and you have a safe condition in the building. We still would have to dig through some, uh, different reports, but none of the new work would involve lead-based paint, obviously, or other items like that. And we don't see that in the buildings as we're going through. Mechanically, they're in good shape, although mechanical, electrical are, are large numbers in that maintenance because those are typically the, uh, infrastructure systems that require the most update from year to year. You do have finishes. Every building has finishes that are on a life cycle as they go through, but we don't see the, um, safety concerns in the building from a finishes standpoint.
We actually have administrators from both of these schools sitting in the back. Can we have them come up so they can ask questions that we don't know to ask? Would that be okay? I know I'm putting y'all on the spot. Mr. Crabtree and, and Eric.
So if, on the diagram from Hickerson.
Yep.
I believe that it was showing, um, that the car runner line was going through the, the side of the building. It currently goes around behind and we still back out way on the, the road. So it's a concern for me. We are moving that to the front and just having the buses come around behind because we already back out on the road and it's dangerous there because it's got a, it has a hill on one side and you've got roads coming out at angles there. Um, so I'm not sure how that would panic.
Uh, there's a couple of different options that we use when, when we're looking at, uh, that type of design to increase the queue space on the site. This, uh, version increases that and we can actually move that road further to the south if necessary so that you, you end up with the same amount of queue space that you have for cars, but you do it in a way that moves the cars through the site faster. Uh, sometimes this is referred to as the airport design in that you have the drop-off lane and the bypass lane to do that. It's creating a wider lane there so that you're moving cars through the space faster, too, so that that reduces the queue lines that you have.
On the East Coffee one, if you could go back to the topo on that, the East Coffee school, what were you talking about the footprint on that might be?
Uh, for the, uh.
East Coffee?
Yep. So this was the analysis. Are you, are you talking about the, the diagram for the building on there?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
Right. I shouldn't have put all those animations. It makes it hard to see. There we go. Uh, so, yeah, in this one, uh, that addition does go out to the back, but it broadens that parking out, puts it on both sides, so it expands it, increases the queue lane, uh, from a drop-off standpoint, uh, and it leaves the room for the two classroom additions to the north or the south in the future.
Cause I know that the back part is kinda lower. It goes uphill, doesn't it, Eric? Back, back there, if you go, if you can go back to the topo, that's, that's gonna be, if, if you go back to the back, you're talking about moving a lot of, a lot of dirt.
There we go. Uh, actually, uh, relatively flat again here, uh, from the building back. Uh, you're at about one fifteen here in the back and at the front, you're one-ten. So it's about a five foot uphill. It's not, again, these sites are relatively flat as we go forward.
Good. I see where the water kinda funnels down on that one side whenever they built that up there a long time ago, obviously, but.
With the addition. Yeah, with the addition, we wanna work on grading as well so you don't have water flowing towards the building.
Right.
I have one other question regarding Hickerson.
Yep.
Did you add to the parking area?
We increased the parking.
For what? I don't remember. I don't recall where the parking.
Uh, with the, uh, diagram for, uh, East Coffee, just put, put it on both sides, we moved it up to fifty-six cars currently that's at forty-two. So we said apples to apples. Let's try and make these, uh, similar. So we went to fifty-six. We would have room if we did the bus loop to add more cars in the length of that drive out if that's what you wanted to do.
Well, I, I was talking about Hickerson Elementary. Did you add to that?
Yes, we did.
Cause I know the.
Yeah. So currently you have, uh, forty-two spaces in front of that building and around the side.
They have the same parking as East.
Yep. So we're trying to take a similar approach to the building so that, um, operationally is very, uh, similar, uh, in concept. But as you can see, we could bring this down a little bit further. Ideally, you'd wanna have your access points as spread out on the site as possible. And so we have a little concern about, uh, moving that center lane, but what you would likely do is you would loop back your, your, uh, drop-off. So go down, turn and come back towards the center if you wanted to make it larger.
So you're actually not doing anything to the current building as far as making an entrance, uh, uh, an entrance that everybody knows where the entrance is?
With the renovations to the office, we would be ma, uh, probably doing exterior work to highlight that as well. Yep. We, we want it to be intuitive when you drive on-site that as soon as you enter, you go, that's the front door right there, instantly recognizable.
We also have some costs in the, in the maintenance for, um, improving accessibility at the main entrance. One of the challenges at Hickerson is that that building is up off the ground. There's only one accessible route and it's not a main entrance. So you currently have some accessibility issues and we tried to capture some improvements that would allow you to actually have better, better access to the front door.
The, the trick at this point is these aren't designs as much as they're, uh, fit plans and concepts so we can establish budget and scope. Design is when we actually go through and we work with you as a school district to go, if this is where it is, what does that look like? How does this function? And we get into that detail that's the specifics around the design. So I don't have a rendering of this is what the new entry would look like, other than the fact that we said, let's make sure we have enough in the budget of the office to know that we could update the entry, that we could add canopy to it, that we'd have signage, whatever it would take to make sure that you can identify those things.
Can we?
The East Coffee bus route and car runner route? So you're saying buses would go and do a turnaround on that side there?
Buses come in, they park diagonally. When it's time to leave, the first bus does the turn inside the loop. Second one follows, third one follows, going out. So they don't have to arrive in order, but they leave in order.
So no routes would be able, like, currently that's where our pre-K pickup and drop-off is, to have a different section for them.
Yep.
So there would be no, no availability for that to happen if buses are there.
If that was, uh, what we wanted for the future and that was part of the design, now we would say, okay, how do we make that happen? And we might move the bus loop from there, uh, knowing that that's an issue. Uh, we don't usually have separate pickup for early childhood compared to the other, uh, uh, parents coming in, but if that's something that we wanna achieve, we build it into the design.
I was thinking all the schools do, but I could be wrong, just because they sign in and sign out. So it takes a little longer for that pickup process to, uh, drop-off and pickup process to happen. And our pre-K teacher has to go out and get them.
Yep.
They can't just be dropped off.
Yep. Um, so there's some other options, too. We could dedicate part of the parking to that. As I mentioned, we've got some additional room at the parking lot there. If we need to have a separate early childhood pickup, drop-off, uh, concept approach, we'd work that into the design.
You said no media, uh, the library would not, it would just get an upgrade, but no new space for that?
No, it would expand out through the, the specialists that are there adjacent to it as well as because we'd be, um, uh, creating special service space, we'd, um, actually be able to almost double it in size from what's there currently. And with that, it's completely renovated. So it's, uh, set up, new design, new concept.
And then the additional classroom, that was later on? Or the possibility of additional classrooms?
So this would be two-section building. This allows for three-section in the future if you need to go to three-section. So again, it's really, it, it's the scope we need the district to define for us right now. Do you wanna design these out to three-section or do you want, are you good at two-section planning for the future?
It seems really silly to me to not plan for the future while we have you already here personally. Why make schools that don't have extra classrooms when our, our county is growing so quickly?
If you know that you have that growth coming, uh, that's certainly something that you'd wanna do. We like to make sure you're not overbuilding, uh, unless you know they're coming. There's different ways we've handled this in the past, too. Sometimes we design the classroom addition and we bid it as an alternate so you can evaluate it and say, that's really good price. Let's go ahead and build it now versus not. But it really, you know what funding you're gonna get when you go into your budget cycle. And so, um, there's certainly no way that the class, the, doing three sections of classrooms, you'd say, we could do that for the same budget that we're doing the rest of this stuff. So it would have to be a decision that you'd say, we'd like to design and build out those.
So do we, do we have empty classrooms currently at these schools or are you full?
We have one class, that steam room that is percolating steam.
Yeah.
Does Hickerson have any?
We have, we have no empty classrooms right now. We have some that if, if we had to make the classroom, not our one area that we have that our assistant principal is in and that our, um, our meeting room is in, that would be the first to go. We'd put her in a corner somewhere and then I would be having meetings in the cafeteria. I don't know, but.
So if we built this and then we even needed one more class, we would already be too small again.
We would be looking for space for people to go.
Okay.
Right now, as I mentioned, you have a lot of your specialist, uh, spaces in full-size classrooms. Uh, you also have your music space that would be part of that new, uh, work. You've got the media center space. So as you build some of those, it frees up classrooms. But no, this, this isn't saying, let's design two plus or add a few extra classrooms on there, but that's another approach you could do as well is say, we'd like a little bit of breathing room flexibility. But if you've got three sections of third grade, you likely have three sections of second and fourth and others. And so it's hard to say, let's put two extra rooms in the building and that would suffice for what the needs are. I think you wanna plan out to say, what's a three-section look like and target that.
So if we did a three-section, what did, how does that change the timeline?
Uh, it really wouldn't. Uh, once they're on-site and building, it's gonna take them that long. It's not, um, as if, oh, we're gonna put six more classrooms on. That's gonna be an extra few months. They'd be building it simultaneously. So from a schedule standpoint, design standpoint, it doesn't change.
Based on your concept, are you taking into account our growth projections for, for this area?
As much as we have the information for it. Yep.
And kinda what timeframe do you look at? You know, how long should this last based on those growth projections, based on your, your conceptual footprint here?
That's a step that we still have to go through a little bit further with the district to know how far you've done an enrollment projection. I can tell you what you don't want is you don't want your architect doing your growth projections and saying, we think you're gonna grow this much and you should build extra. That should be a third party saying, here's our enrollment projections and then we can tell you this is how, how long your building would take to get to that point.
Well, it, it's not gonna take. And Einstein to know that Hickerson, that area, whether it's the school or not, is growing.
If they build those houses, for sure.
Whether those kids come to Hickerson or not is another story. But my thinking, if we had a new facility, a brand-new look to serve that whole area out there, there would be extra, there would be need for more classrooms. And, uh, I, and I'm looking toward the future of, is Fire Lake, uh, Dr. Crabtree, is Fire Lake in your?
It's North Coffee. The new subdivision that's being built on Cat Creek is on.
And that, and that one across from, uh, on Old Tallahome Highway, no, Cat Creek, that hundred, yeah. So I mean, it's just, there's people, there are developers coming in and that's the section they're finding the land to build on and that's gonna affect us.
If you know that there, the permits have already been pulled and they're building the houses and you have those, do you have an urgency? Right now, we don't want to speculate on that. We know that that's likely a growth scenario. But what I will say is this, going back to the sixty percent of renovation versus new construction, if you're going to go to three sections now and it's all part of this, you're probably bumping up against that sixty percent, in which case now you have the question of saying, are we in better shape if we design a new building on that site?
So it's really important. We know the projection for what, what we're gonna be, been wrong with the day.
I know we have talked about this, but this is kinda something that, that I've been involved in all my life. What are we looking at? Infrastructure. There's not sewer out there.
No, no, we're still.
At either one of these places.
Still septic.
One of these places, the ground perks real well. I mean, we, we can talk about building all this and I'm not trying to be a damn foot of damper on anything here, but if we can't put a sewer system in out there, all of this is for naught.
Well, we're still using the same approach to sewage as septic, uh, at each of these sites.
I mean, I know you've got, if you could go back to the topo on that one for East Coffee.
Yep.
So I mean, you're, you're going back to spots back here in the back that had, that they're not real, they don't perk real well.
Nope.
I mean, I went to school there. Mr. Powell was my, my principal up there a long time ago. But I, I've, I've worked in this area and, you know, where that's at, you're pretty much handicapping and you're handcuffing where your sewer lines are going to have to go. And I don't know that a lot of people understand what, what is going to have to happen. Cause you don't want your kids out there on top of it. They're already having, Eric, y'all still having problems up there with sewer line?
Uh, I mean, we, we're on septic, so we, we have.
Yeah.
Some, sometimes.
We're in a drought.
We're, we're in agreement on that. Ideally, it would be city sewer.
Yeah.
But that's not.
Don't see that coming in a while.
That's not something we see coming from the city of the school.
How far is Waterford from there? Yeah, city sewer.
How, how far is the nearest sewer connection to the site?
Long ways.
It's very close.
No, there, there is no plans to go to either one of these places.
And so water, you know, domestic water is in the street at both locations. Six-inch line.
Right.
Pressure is good at, at East Coffee, but not so well at Hickerson.
Yeah. So I mean, to do a perk test would probably be a really good idea.
So we do know the, the 95 addition, actually for both schools tied into the existing build lines.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
So I know there's a thousand gallon tank in the front. And then we had a 1,500 gallon tank that actually came around the south end.
Yes, sir.
And tied into the front. So that, that was actually my thinking, provided we get elevation with building to get sewer out is, is bringing back to the front.
Yeah. And then, you know, and to have a pump system put in and to, you know, we may have, you may even have to go to a LPP, low-pressure system to have to pump it. But the point is, I guess, is what I'm trying to get at is none of that ground out there is really good for perk, for septic systems at either place.
It's middle Tennessee.
Yeah.
Middle Tennessee.
Yeah.
Actually, we, we realize the importance of that. Jim Gillis, our civil engineer.
Yes, sir.
And he's a, he's an important part of our team.
Right. Sure.
So we, we understand the.
But I just wanted to mention that.
That, that's a good, good advice and good suggestion if you want to get that, that perk test and get some areas found.
Right.
Or know what we got up against.
And we'll also recommend doing some subsurface investigation for geotechnical when you do the perk test at the same time.
Yeah, that was my next, if we done any core test or anything out there to see.
Not to that concept at this point.
But I mean, just, just saying that that would be something we'd want to do before.
Absolutely. We would like to kind of develop the site plan, locate the building and the parking area because that's different compaction of criteria. So we could get better information if we know kind of an idea where the building's going.
Yeah. I understand, I'm just, you know, we're, we're talking about building it.
Yeah.
But it's not going to be relevant if we don't have, you know, our, our infrastructure is going to be a great big part, obviously. So thank you.
I have one more question. Can we go back to East Coffee?
Uh, which East Coffee?
Um, the East Coffee where we have the bus rerouted on the side there. Where would you put the playground and would there still be two separate playgrounds or just one big one or how, where would it be?
There's a, there's a couple of different ways you could do that. There's a nice area in here that's between where the fire road would be. You could look at that as ball field, you could look at that as playground. You could certainly develop this area's playground. I think what you would want to do is if this is where your younger students are on one side, this becomes the younger student playground. You've got your third through fifth graders here. They probably use more of the backside of the site, so.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. And I don't know if you're this far into the planning stage yet, but I've visited Hickerson a couple of times. And I've, this really might be more towards Dr. Crabtree. But is, is there plans to have a dedicated area for school counseling or is that already in place?
So we, we have a, a classroom that has a temporary wall down the center. That part of that is her, her space now.
Is, does that meet the requirements for the confidentiality guidelines?
I can't say that it does, but I can't say that it, it doesn't either.
Right.
Cause I've not stood on one side and listened.
Yeah.
So, you know, I know that, that you can hear some things through that wall. I don't know if you can hear well enough to, to be able to decipher conversation.
Right. Okay.
So this, this is a great example of when I talk about student services renovations, you can see the size of a former classroom here with the wall down the center that she's talking about. That's a, we have this space, we have a need, put a wall up and let's move on. Versus if we were renovating that whole area, we'd be gutting it all out, designing it to the right size. Walls going all the way up to the ceiling deck insulated to operate that function. So the renovation would right-size all of those student services space and design them specifically for the need as opposed to, here's a leftover classroom space that we've adapted.
Right. I just, you know, want to bring that up, make sure it's not something that's overlooked. Also, there was a concern about the bathrooms at Hickerson. I think Dr. Crabtree, didn't you tell us there's only one bathroom available for teachers and staff?
One staff.
That's.
That would be included in the staff renovation spaces. We'd have more staff bathrooms as well as.
That would be later on in the.
Yeah.
Okay.
Both buildings have been upgraded for an accessible pair of bathrooms. This would be looking at, all bathrooms would be updated to that. So you've got full accessibility as well as additional staff restroom space.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Other questions?
You're really good at answering questions. Thank you.
It's not our first school rodeo. Great. As I said, this really is getting down to, we're looking at, how far do you want to go with this? And so I think the next step is just confirming, is it, are we doing, talking about the full two-section? Do you want to plan for a third section now? Answering some of those questions that we could say, then this is the budget number and we can take it to the next level and get it into your planning process.
So how, how soon do you need to know from, from us? We probably need to go back and look at our growth projections for the area. Cause you know, what, what I'm hearing here is that there's some concerns with that. So we're probably going to have to go back and look at that. And then so is that part of the, what's the next step here?
At this point, we can go as fast as you want to go. We've kind of exhausted most of these types of details. Looking at enrollment projections, that's a relatively simple thing for us to do in terms of capacity and saying, if you're going to grow this fast, here's when you'd likely be adding those sections and doesn't make sense to do it now. If it's going to happen within the next five years, it's much like an energy return on investment, it makes sense to do it. If it's more than five years out, you might be a little hesitant. And if it's going to be 10 years out, then it's probably better saying, we're better off waiting on that because things could change. You might, you might say, oh, actually we grew here more and we need to look at replacing this building versus that one. Or you might look at your boundaries differently. So if you've, I keep pointing over here to Kelvin. If you've got enrollment projections that you have currently that we don't have right now, we can look at those. If not, we can work with who might be good as a third party to develop those enrollment projections and then compare that to a capacity study.
I don't think we, we don't go out 10 years. How many years do we go out of our growth projections?
Basically, the projections that we have is using the information we have today. So we, we have from our kindergarten all the way through the 12th grade and, and of course, including the city coming in.
Okay, so our projections are basically who's coming up?
It's basically, we have actual data. We don't have growth data from houses that's going to be built or development that's going to be taking place.
Okay.
Which would require, as he said, another company coming in and actually doing a study for that.
Yeah. There are demographers that are good for that. What you use is, use what's called the cohort method where you say, we have this many now, we can see them moving forward.
I mean, I don't think it needs to be that complicated because, I mean, look at Murphy'sboro, it's exploded. And it, it's here and whether we want it accepted or not. And, and I don't know what we're going to do. Because it is going to expand the schools in the city and the county.
What demographers. What demographers will usually do is they'll work with the city and the county to look at building permits, what's plotted and plan for future development, calculate how many students per household they believe would come out of that. And using historical data, they're able to do that. It's hard because the kids that are born up through kindergarten, you can see that, that's a five-year window and you know they're coming. Who's going to be born after five years is the tricky part and where are they going to be?
Or who's going to be moving in with, with families.
And what's the mix of houses? That's, that plays into it.
And the housing is geared toward families, not toward retirees.
Right.
So we got, you have to look at that factor also, that the houses that are being built are built for, for families.
Right. And are they, and are they starter homes for families, younger kids or not?
So just to be clear, this data is based on the growth numbers that we, the, the actual data numbers that we have given you.
Yes, the, what you have today.
Does not take into account any growth and stuff. And you'd be plugged into that as pretty as our real estate experts.
And we've got the second, state's second biggest industrial park now too.
Yeah. Well, that, yeah, that, yeah, so, yep. So yeah, we may have to look at that and then, and get back to you on that because we may have to look at some things. But you know, so, so how does this, so now you've made this presentation, we're kind of looking at what our preliminary numbers are. And then what do you need from us to move forward to the next?
What's our next step?
Really what it is, is I mentioned the, the scope that the budgets are based on. Do me again, sorry. One second. There we go. As I said, we've got the scope there for a two-section building, we've got the enhanced scope. It's really confirming with the district, do you want to do each of these things and is, is this the approach? And do you want to build for three-section or not going forward? And with that confirmation, we can firm up the numbers and say, this is the budget. Then it's the board set, setting it into your plan saying, we'd like to do this. And then it goes forward to the county to get it into their budget.
So basically, we would then have to, Mr. Shores, vote to confirm or conceptually this and.
I would think that we would need to have a, a work session and this needs to be a topic in the discussion of all the different things that you're bringing up. Do we do it in a two, two cycle or third? What, what direction you want to go as a board? Then it has to be given back to them and then taken to the county commission, budget and finance, see where they will go with it. And then if, if they move forward with it, then go to the full commission from there. But I, I, I would think that we would need to have a work session to, the, these are conceptual designs. They're not full designs, but they need to know what direction you want to go as a board. And they're giving you some base prices and then we give it back to them and they're going to give, they're going to narrow it down even more.
This document is going to help you determine what the scope of work is going to be to tell us what we need to do.
Right.
Now, I know you have a work session coming up in the middle of, end of this month.
And it, I think, Mr. Chairman, I think it's pretty full already, isn't it?
Oh, okay.
February, we do have a work session in February, at the end of February. And we could put that on there because there's some room on that.
Well, I was going to suggest that if you wanted us at your work session, we'd be glad to be there and go over this in more detail. Or answer more questions or just have a discussion about it.
Yeah.
We may have some more information to talk about in February.
I think it's important as this is for the county and the taxpayers and, and everybody, that it needs to be a session just for that.
I totally agree.
It's a lot.
I totally agree.
I think there's enough information here to go over that it would use a full work session.
Yeah.
Completely. I agree with you, Ms. Jones. It's, there's a lot here.
We already have some stuff on the work session for February. It's going to take up a lot of time too, so, unless we had a really long work session. So we may, we'll, we'll look at trying to get something scheduled up. And because we want to move forward on this as soon as possible.
I think Kelvin, I've already had conversations about, most of this probably needs to be brought to the work session.
Yeah.
If this was as simple as you just said, all we want to do is a gym and expand the cafeteria and kitchen into the old gym, that's an easy objective. Yeah, this is how you do it.
Yeah.
But there's so many subjective pieces in here. We need your understanding and agreement of this is what you want to do. Because right now, we're simply suggesting, here's the things you could take a look at as part of this.
Yeah, we're going to need to work through the growth stuff too. So we got a lot of stuff on our agenda here. Trying to ask people to attend a lot of meetings, but we'll, we'll try to figure something out, so.
Mr. Val, can we invite the administrators from those schools to be a part of their work session?
Sure. No problem.
I think it's important, they know things to ask that we don't know to ask and they're a wealth of information.
Oh, yeah. I think that's pretty much, so we'll, we'll just have to work out a date because we got a lot of, a lot of meetings. I didn't know we're kind of taxing everybody on getting everybody in the same place. So we'll, we'll work something out and we'll, we'll get back with you on a date.
Sounds great.
We'll probably want you to be there and, and get the administrators there and just kind of sit down and chat about it. So thank you very much for the presentation.
Thanks for having us.
Thank y'all so much.
Thank you very much.
A lot of information. We just scratched the surface.
All right.
This is a pretty tough path to go on. Row, we'll have to justify everything we do with you to somebody else like the county commission.
Yeah. And it's, yeah, it's just, there, there's some questions here we need to kind of work out. But, but that's, that's the whole idea, the concept, right?
That's right. That's, it's pretty standard.
Yeah.
Just let us know when you want us back and we'll be here.
All right.
You have, Kelvin, does that contact us? So any additional questions, as true as it is.
Thank you for coming out. Excellent presentation.
We're still really happy we chose y'all.
That's good.
All right. Now we can move on to our regular meeting, call to order. Did we have any public comments? I don't, I don't think anybody had any signed up for public comments. So let's go to the principal report. And we got a lot of principals here today, so thanks for coming.
All right. I asked if I could go first because I've got a date with my wife at the gym here in a minute. So she's texting and wondering where I'm at. East Coffee, first of all, excited about the potential of the renovation and gladly be at the work session to, to work through that and talk through some things. So a lot to, lot to digest and talk about, so, but very excited about it. It's a big week at East Coffee, Thursday. We are welcoming 30-plus leaders and teachers from across the state to come watch our third, fourth and fifth grade reading teachers. We're doing walkthroughs at our school and at North Coffee to highlight some of the work we've been doing with the, the grant that we've been working with, the N I E T grant. So a lot of hard work being put in by Jonah Sizemore and our, our literacy coaches, Michelle Howell and Robin Watkins. So glad to open our doors to folks. I think we got, do we have people from Humboldt coming? All the way from Humboldt coming to watch our teachers. So I've had the opportunity to go to Humboldt and some of us gone to Cheatham County to watch. So very excited about that. And so we're, we're stressed about it, but we're, we're excited. And then Thursday evening, we get to highlight our basketball and cheerleaders. We're hosting a, a small banquet for our, for our players and cheerleaders. They are girls, we're the silver bracket champions. So good work there and our boys were runners-up in the silver bracket. So looking forward to that. That's all I've got tonight, so thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Who's our next victim?
First of all, it being School Board Appreciation Month, Deerfield gifted you the grazing boxes, I believe they're called.
They're so cute.
They're prepared by Ms. Carol Ann, by Ms. Carol Ann Dameron. She prepared those for you guys. So on behalf of Deerfield Elementary, we'd like to say thank you for your service to the school system and the community as a whole. It's a very important job and you are taking it very seriously and we appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
As far as what's going on at Deerfield, we have our academic pep rally coming up. It was scheduled for Friday, but of course, we've had to reschedule it because report cards have gotten put off because of the weather. So we are going to be rescheduling that to celebrate our students' successes. The teachers are digging in hard as far as January 7th. Our, when we came back, our teachers took some of the data that Dr. Cornelius was talking about. He, I invited him out to our P L C meetings a while ago to explain, to go over some of that data that he collected for us. We took that along with our projection reports and this data that we have collected on our students and are really looking at that closely to help move our students up and help them be successful and really focusing on their tier-one intervention time with the small group instruction and really honing in on each individual student to see where we can meet. With the T S A money, I have spent some of that T S A money on the Wonders and an extra piece of the Wonders curriculum. And it will help the students supplement that Wonders curriculum in the intervention pieces. curriculum in the intervention pieces, so not only will they be able to work with skills, but they will also be able to work with the standards that are, they are working in the classroom, so, that is what we're doing at Deerfield, the teachers are digging in hard, we're trying to look at new things to help our students progress, and again, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, at Hickerson, we've just been business as usual since, well, what few days we've been back from Christmas break and not missed for snow. Today, our E L A teachers worked with our reading coach and, on working through intervention materials that we already have access to, and how to use those, and, and what resources we have already at our disposal to use during those intervention times, and then tomorrow, they're working with the math coach to work through small groups, what small groups should look like, what materials they have to use and utilize, and things like that. Tomorrow afternoon, Mr. Cornelius, Dr. Cornelius mentioned the data chats, we're having data chats with third through fifth grades, and central office staff is coming to help with those, so that we can knock them all out in one afternoon, we have all their data compiled, so the kids can look at it, and we can talk to them, and, and show them where they're at, and, and where we need them to, to be. On February fourth, Billy Hicks is coming out to set up the planetarium with our fifth graders, and, and talk to them about that, and they get to experience that planetarium, and that's all I've got, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, hope you all are doing well. Real short, for middle school, as Dr. Crabtree said, business as usual, so we're just treading right along, you might say. We do have our last home basketball game this Thursday night, so that's, that's gonna take place, weather permitting, and as long as Cannon County is still in school, our, we are hosting the area tournament next week, so Tuesday through Friday, so we'll have that going on during the week, and then, Dr. Cornelius mentioned this in his report, but we will be taking our last benchmark assessment at the end of February, and we'll use those predictive results to determine who needs extra remediation, who needs some extra support, to make sure that students are ready for the T cap test, so, that'll be our third benchmark test, we've seen some students grow, which is awesome, students are taking that a little more serious now, and we're trying to convince them that they need to, to do so, so, but yeah, business as usual at middle school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that was our...
Mr. Chairman, now, we've got two principals on what we call injured reserve list.
Okay.
Mrs. Morton had an accident last week, and she's having knee surgery Thursday morning, and Mr. Parsley had a snow sled accident this weekend, and he's having some hand surgery also on Thursday.
I was gonna say, Mr. Parsley is normally here, I mean, he's pretty faithful.
He called his accident, you know, so this, he went, he went to the, when he had his accident, he went Sunday morning to T O A in Murfreesboro, and saw a P A, and she said, well, it's gonna have to have some surgery, so he was scheduled to go to the doctor, and then the doctor said, we're probably gonna have to do surgery on it Thursday, he said he was in a lot of pain right now because of, just, he had it in a splint, he says it's been throbbing all day long, so, that's why they're not here.
Well, we will definitely keep them in our prayers, so, yeah, for full recovery, speedy recovery. All right, thank you. All right, this is our... What's that? That's a problem. We can let the student ambassadors go now, but as long as you promise to stay for the whole meeting and not leave, because I know you gotta, okay, because I think last month, they, they, they thought they just did the report and they left, and I know you gotta stick around and get credit, so, so we can do student ambassadors, that's fine. And for the record, when, when they, when they get started, Ms. Nelson had to go to the County Commissioners Meeting, so, we're, this helps us stall until she can get back here, so.
Okay, so, we're here, I'm Addison, I'm a senior representative.
I'm Trevor, I'm also a senior representative.
Davis McKenzie, I'm a junior representative. So, the Fine Arts Department is gonna be preparing for their Fine Arts Night on, uh, next month, on Tuesday, February twenty-fifth, there'll be live art, so like, Thirnwell Pottery, painting and drawing, like, there's gonna be displayed artwork from the high schoolers, as well as C M S and W M S art for sale, for every budget, and there will be chorus and band performances, and Wernigor will be doing their thing, and yeah, expect other amazing things as this semester continues.
All right.
All right, from our band, we had Ignacio Carnes Vargas on Midstate, he won principal bass clarinet for the silver. For basketball, girls and boys are doing really, really well in their season, both girls and boys are playing Shelbyville away tonight, which is the first game of the district. Friday, we play Columbia at home, and come out to the patch if you guys would like, be much appreciated. In wrestling, wrestling is at home tonight versus Cascade in Warren County they're hosting, and then boys wrestling at the Dog Pound Duels in Smyrna on Friday.
So, yeah, so swim, all of their home meets have been, they've already had all those, so two of our swimmers actually qualified for the state swim meet, so that is Elise Lazalier and Jack Stowe, and then for our dance, all of our competitions have, we're finished with all of our competitions, and there should be a dance clinic for younger pe, uh, younger girls and students who want to, you know, participate in that, and then we also have a DECA trip at the end of the month to Orlando, so the students that are participating in that are going to the Sports Entertainment Convention, so they'll spend a week there and just do whatever they're doing. And then, our soccer season is starting right around the corner, they just started practice today, and then baseball is soon to come as well, so, that's all we've got, extracurriculars and stuff like that, so sports are in full swing right now.
All right, well, thanks for coming, we love our student ambassadors, and, you know, hope you appreciate that, that, how the whole process works when you come down here, too, it's, I know it's not the most exciting, but you gotta see how, how it all works, and, and we appreciate you coming, so.
Hope I can tell us your names, even though we know them.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, Davis McKenzie, I'm a junior at Coffey County.
Addison McCullough, I'm a senior at Coffey County.
And I'm Trevor Jesse, I'm also a senior at Coffey County.
Thank y'all for being here.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we have the call for intent, so what we're going to do is approve the, the agenda, and with that, unless there's no, if there's no objections, we will also approve the minutes for the last meeting, which are in your packet, and also, we have two out-of-state or overnight trips that are on here on the general consent item, so any, if everybody's fine with that, I will call for a motion to approve the general consent items.
I so move.
Okay, Mr. Cordell, second?
I second it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, before we have a vote on it, the band Lipscomb University overnight trip, that's, that's a student from our high school, and they did not realize that they, they were selected to go to this program at Lipscomb University, so they didn't realize that until a latter part of last week, so that's why that item came in late, because they were selected and did not realize that until, so that's why that wasn't on the original agenda, I guess, so to speak.
Quite an honor, and we don't want to miss it, so, yeah, so, okay, all right, so we've got, the motion is to approve the consent agenda, uh, Mr. Gilli is not here, and Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
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 And, vote aye, so that passes eight to nothing. All right, the first agenda item is the director's search, and we have a couple items on here, and we need to, I talked to Dr. Grissom, we're actually gonna have to vote on this timeline and critical decision sequence here, so just for, for the general public and the, and the folks out there in YouTube land, we have gone through the process of choosing, this, this lays out the entire timeline, we've gone through the, the process of choosing the consultant, the search schedule is what we're looking at here, we have set community meetings, and that's, those are going to be January twenty-seventh here, and that is, we have the, the schedule for that, we're gonna start at noon with the mayor, county commission, city council, community and business leaders, and school board will be here for a lunch meeting, then at one-thirty, classified employees, two-thirty is gonna be central office staff, supervisors and principals, at three-thirty is gonna be teachers, and then at five o'clock, we're gonna have general community forums, so this is an opportunity for people to come, hear the presentation, what we're gonna do, and then, basically, give some input into what, what we're looking for, 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 for a director, and qualifications, and, and what people want to see there. There will also be an online survey, so there's gonna be plenty of opportunity for people to participate in the process, and then, what we will do then is, T S B A will then be conducting those, and Dr. Tammy Grissom will come and actually do the meetings, moderate the meetings for us, and then on the twelfth of February, we will have a special called board meeting, we're going to adopt, we're gonna get the results, T S B A will collate the results, give us the results, we're gonna adopt the criteria and, and discuss the results, and approve those, and then we will move forward, the, the, the portal will open to accept resumes, the application deadline will be March fourteenth of twenty-five, and then we'll receive and process the files, recruit the candidates, there's, there's a process we go through to verify the, the completeness of the files, and then we begin our evaluation process, by March thirty-first, we're gonna select the candidates, so we'll be screening candidates according to the adopted criteria, and then we will notify unsuccessful candidates, and check availability of candidates. On four-twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-four, twenty-five, we're going to interview candidates, and that will be a three-day process, so we will take the finalists and interview them, and then on March twenty-eighth, we'll begin the second phase of, of consideration, so focusing on one candidate at a time, and then by March, or by May fifth, we will be offering a contract by the schedule, May twelfth, announce the appointment, and hopefully have the new director of schools assuming the position by, on June first of twenty-five, that is the, the, the timeline, any, I guess we need a motion to approve this timeline, and, and then we can discuss it, too, but we need a motion first, so.
Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Okay, Mr. Cordell, second?
I'll second.
Ms. Hodge? Okay, so the motion is to approve the timeline and critical decision sequence that you have before you, that's, it's, this is for, for anybody that wants to look, it is in the packet that is available through the Coffey County Board of Education website, you can just click on meetings, and it'll be there under the January meeting, any discussion?
I have a question.
Sure.
There's almost a month in between selecting the candidates and interviewing them, what if an amazing candidate comes in late, do we accept them, or will we be unable to at that point, because they've already been selected?
Our, right now, according to the schedule, we, because there's a lot of vetting that has to go on in, in looking at that, so our application deadline is by, is March fourteenth, so.
Even if it's our shining star, we tell them no?
Well, you know, and, and the question is, you know, how, how long do you want to hold the process open, or, or, or that, you know, I mean, there's...
I just wondered if T S B A saw that there was another candidate that they thought was really great for us, if they would pass that person on to us, or just tell them no, we never know about it.
Well, I think the board always has the option of that, and, I mean, I hope we have the option of ourselves, of...
We do.
Not just T S B A, but...
We do.
So that's clarified, that you did.
Yes. The, the thing with this timeline is, is designed to get us a, somebody on board by, by June first, so, if we, if we get somebody coming in late, and, and the board decide, you know, we can approve the schedule, but if the board decides, as Prey points out, that we want to consider that person, that we can get them into the process.
That's what I wanted to know, if this was like set in stone after we voted on it, or if there were still options.
Yeah, I mean, we'd hope that everybody would get in by the fourteenth, because it makes the process a little easier, but, but, you know, ultimately, it's our decision, T S B A does not choose for us, it's our decision, so if we want to modify the process as we go along, then that is our decision as a board.
Okay.
Under the vetting of the candidates, will we be able to see all the, all the applicants ourselves?
That is my understanding, they're not just gonna give us a select group, we're gonna, we're gonna see everything, so, yeah, I mean, and I, I think we talked about that several times, and, and, you know, I think we need to insist on that, so.
And I, I, for some reason, I wasn't here when she did all that, when she did the presentation, so that may have been included in that, so I just wanted to make sure that, that we see all applications.
Right.
And we're the ones that decide whether, you know, we decide the list, not them, they're providing us, you know, assistance and getting all that to us, but...
They'll give us their recommendations, but it's totally up to us about, you know, we're the ones that have the final say, we're on the final candidates and who we actually interview, so, so that's, yeah, I mean, because they don't know, I mean, they, they're basing it on the criteria we give them and that type of thing, and what they've seen and their experience, but ultimately, the final say is ours, absolutely. Any more questions on the schedule? No? All right, Ms. Y, let's, we need to vote to approve this, so the, so the motion, let me repeat the motion, is to approve the timeline and critical decision sequence, and basically with the caveats that Jennifer mentioned, so, Ms. Yinch?
Aye.
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 Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
And I will vote aye, so that passes eight to zero, okay.
I thought it was seven to one, didn't somebody say nay?
I don't think so.
I thought I heard nay, sorry, my apologies, I thought I heard Jennifer say nay.
You're so used to me saying no.
She is, she's the no lady.
I just thought I heard that.
You just expected her to say no.
Not this time. I might get you some time tonight, we'll see.
All right.
Always.
All right, the next item on our agenda is the classroom and office furniture, and this is for Coffey County Central High School, Coffs Center, Raider Academy, and Central Office, and I believe this was discussed in, we, this was on the agenda, a prior, prior meeting, and you discussed it in the Capital Projects Committee, I think, and got questions answered there, was that correct?
It was, it was on the agenda for November the eleventh, and, and I went over it that night, and, and there was no motion, or any action taken at all on that night, it was asked to be put back on the Capital Projects Committee meeting, so it was put back on that, we discussed it at the end of that meeting, it was decided to put it back on the agenda for the January meeting, and that street was back on here, but it is the exact same quote that was given during the November eleventh meeting.
Okay, and for those that don't recall, just a little background.
There's not a motion yet, so.
Yeah, yeah, we were just giving the basic information, so, so at this time, we can entertain a motion, or somebody proposing... So, so at this time, we can entertain a motion or if somebody proposes a motion to approve the classroom and office furniture bid that is dated November 11th, 2024?
Mr. Chairman, if you would like for me to go over a little bit of what we're doing before a motion is actually made, I, I don't mind doing that. Then, then you would get your motion before the discussion, if that's what you would like. Or you can get your motion and then me go over it, or however you want to go, go about it.
I, why don't you give us a quick rundown of that?
Okay. And we'll. Okay, for the past, gosh, I want to say probably eight years, we've been slowly going through the schools and changing out furniture due to damage and updating and, and just making our furniture better for the students and for the faculty and staffs. And, and that's what we're doing here. We've gone through all the elementary schools and, and have, have worked through those. We've, Raider Academy has been taken care of, middle school, they received new furniture back when it was built, and also Deerfield, of course. And we have worked, started working on the high school. And we have been working on the high, high school for past several years. And we're to the point of, of the area, the CTE area that is the, the business department, as well as some of the other classrooms. And, and that's what we're, we're working on here at, at the high school. There are some also office areas that, that needs some furniture taken care of as well. Over at Coffs, there is a counselor that is using a lot of hand-me-down furniture that is in pretty bad shape. And it would be updating that furniture. At Raider Academy, I, I just, since it was going to be on this, we have one chair that was damaged that would not be covered under warranty. So I went ahead and added it in here. That's what the, the one item is at Raider Academy. And at Central Office, there was two offices that, in the same time, we've been doing this with the classrooms and the, and the schools, we've been slowly working our way through the offices here at Central Office. And there's two, two offices that needs to be updated. And so that includes it as well as the furniture in, in this room here. It would be changing out the tables and the chairs. The chairs are stained and broken and, and we're constantly taking one out and disposing of it. The tables are, well, they've been retrofitted and to be used the way that we're using them and so forth. So that's kind of where we are. This is a TIPS contract, so it is using the Capital Projects. The reason why we really like using the Capital Projects on this one is we're able to keep using the same furniture. So that each time we do the next phase, the furniture match is still within the school. We're trying to, to move away from having the, the hodgepodge furniture. This, this classroom has one thing, this classroom has another, they're, they're more coherent. So that, that kind of gives you an idea. And we do have a, a line item in the, the budget for furniture. And it is under the, the capital outlay line. And so this is just the next step. And depending on how this goes, I would like to continue to move forward. The next step is going to be looking at our band room. There's a lot of, of things that's in the band room that is, it's in poor condition. It's, it's been abused, I won't say abused, they're throwing instruments into them, so they've been abused, if you want to call it abused. And the furniture, it's just, it's time for it to be changed out. It's been there for many years. So as soon as I get done with this, if this passes, I want to move to the next step. And it's, it's slowly getting through our high, high school and, and trying to get it all updated and get new furniture where it's needed.
Dr. Powell, do you have any input?
No, sir. Mr. Shores has been on this now for about three months or so, I think, and he's got some good bids for it. And like you folks have heard, there's a need for it, just more or less just completes the process, except for the band room, which we mentioned early on, which will probably be the next step that y'all have to deal with. But outside of that, I think it needs to go ahead and be purchased if at all possible.
Okay. Do we have a motion to accept the classroom and office furniture bid?
I make a motion to accept the bid.
I'll second that motion.
Cordell? Discussion. So the motion is to accept the classroom and officer, office furniture bid that's debated, dated November 11th, 2024, for a complete project total of $130,715.92.
My biggest concern, I think, is this is coming out of the same money that we're getting our bleachers out of, is it not?
April's not here. This, this is actually, this is actually the line item for furniture. I don't believe that it is the same line item as you would be getting the bleacher repairs or, or what the, the board decides to go with. So I would say no, because this is a furniture line.
But we could use this money.
That would be an April question.
Is it capital outlay, I think that's, that's.
I would think you could, yes.
I, I, I mean, I was on the Capital Projects Committee, I don't recall. I mean, who, who asked to put it back on the agenda?
I received the, the, the agenda already built, so I, I, I don't know who actually asked to put it back on. It was already built, so I just thought it was on the agenda. Wasn't it discussed in the meeting?
Oh, I thought you said someone asked to put it back on.
Somebody, somebody must have, because it was on the agenda. There was items on the agenda and, and I wasn't part of the building of that agenda. I, I don't know who actually asked. Oh, but it wasn't discussed in the capital? It was discussed at the Capital Projects. And Ms. Jones and Mr. Hansard and Mr. Gillie was there during the discussion. But, but who actually asked to put it on that agenda? It, it was just sent to me, the agenda was, this time. So I, I was, I was not part of that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said previously tonight that someone asked to put it on the agenda.
Yeah, that's what we're trying to find out.
That somebody from the.
Okay, they didn't ask me. I'm assuming they asked somebody that built the agenda. And Mr. Ballard may know or, or Dr. Powell, but I'm, I'm not aware, I just know it was on the agenda. So I figured somebody asked to put it on the agenda. Yeah, Mr. Gillie said he didn't ask for it to be put on the agenda, so.
Yeah, I didn't either. I, I, I thought we, we, this was a dead in the water.
Yeah, it was for discussion at the, it was asked to discuss it at the, at the, at the Capital Project.
But we didn't, we didn't discuss it, but we didn't, there was, there was no interest in it, I thought.
I wasn't at that meeting, so I don't know.
Yeah, I don't think there was any interest in it. And bringing it back, and putting it back on the agenda, so.
There, there was discussion at the meeting. And, and I asked, do we want to bring it back to the board? And, and there was a consensus from the committee to put it back on the board agenda. And otherwise, I wouldn't put it back on here.
So you put it back on there?
I put it back on here.
Okay.
Because I was, I was given the direction that y'all, the committee wanted to.
I, I, I just think that we're, we're trying to, to get bleachers here. It's $130,000 that we could put toward the bleachers whenever we find out what our bid is and what, what we can, how we can bid that. You know, that's, I think that's our main, my, my, on my part, I think that we are to, to, you know, put our emphasis toward $130,000 toward getting our bleachers put in. Whenever we decide, whenever we can bid on it and whenever we can vote on that, so. That's, that's my opinion, so.
Some of this stuff on here seems really, really expensive. Like for one multipurpose chair, it's $297. For a teacher chair, it's $430. Do we have options to maybe not spend this much on each individual chair? Are there, or is that just what we have to have?
Is that a question for me, or?
I don't know. Whoever wants to answer.
When, when, when we go through with looking at the furniture, and, and I worked with Ernie Morris on this, which is, her name is Lisa Kirkus. And, and when, as we go through it, there are, there, there is furniture out there that can be purchased cheaper. And I, and I brought this up to her several different times. And there's a name for it that they actually do test on the, the lasting of the furniture. And, and that's where you're going to change in the difference. We could get cheaper furniture and it's going to be breaking a whole lot sooner. There's, there is a couple of other things that goes along with this. If it's purchased through Ernie Morris, they deliver the furniture, they install it, they put it together, they do the full nine yards on it. If there is a piece that is broke, gets broken or damaged, then they, they repair it. Or they bring in a new piece and, and take care of it. And we, we have had that on two or three different pieces. If you will remember, and I can't remember if it's completely this board or it might have been the one before, there was some furniture that was bought at Hillsboro, that was a bunch of cabinets. The cabinets was not up to our standards and they were not up to the standards of Ernie Morris. The cabinets were then donated to us and new cabinets were brought to us to replace those cabinets. And we still have the ones that were damaged and they are actually being used in our system as well. Those are the type of things that we are getting out of using this company. But it, it is a different quality and, and they can go through the actual different materials that is used on the seats, on the material, this, the top of tables and the desk. And once again, if they are damaged, if the high school students or breaks one, then it is turned into warranty and, and we get a replacement on it, if it is, it should have held up for. So that, those are the things that we're looking at. But yes, we could go with cheaper furniture, but we will be getting cheaper furniture.
Ms. Melson is back, so she can answer questions about the line item issues, so.
Ms. Melson, this money that the, the furniture is coming out of the Capital Projects, is that the same money that the bleachers become, we'll be buying the bleachers with?
So no, there's two separate line items in the budget. You have, it falls within the capital outlay budget, but there's a line item for furniture and there's a line item for capital. So there are separate line items.
But could, could we use the same money to buy the bleachers with?
There's not enough in the furniture line in this current budget to buy bleachers, but some of the funding could be transferred down into the capital line.
So we could transfer this money into our, to buy the bleachers, correct?
We, yes, we could do that with approval from Dr. Powell, that wouldn't require a board approval.
At this point in time, Mr. Hansard, there was not money put in the capital outlay budget for bleachers. So that would have to be something, it would have to be put in somewhere. Furniture was in the capital outlay budget, but bleachers were not, because that was something else that came up later on. But it could be adjusted if we needed to.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, Dr. Powell, is that we could move that, this money to subsidize buying the bleachers, correct?
That's the board's discretion, yes, sir.
We typically, to use, usually do that if we have, like, say, we don't budget enough for capital, we typically would reserve some of that furniture, just in case we had a large item that was to, you know, like the heater, like the, the water heaters at the high school, we typically would do something like that. So typically, yeah, we budget a little bit more in those areas, just in case we have some kind of emergency in the schools.
Yes, ma'am.
So there's not enough, so the bleachers would have to come out of fund balance, I think that's what we discussed.
Well, there's not enough in the furniture line to transfer down, so I don't currently know the balance in that line at this moment in time, but it would not cover all of the bleachers.
Right.
Yeah, we understand that.
Yeah. But our normal capital budget, do we have enough to buy the bleachers out of our capital budget, that line item, without dipping into fund balance?
No, sir. So we brought out the remaining part of what was left in capital in the, in budget amendment number five. And that was to cover the paving and the locks. And so there, only, the only fund that, funds that are left in capital restricted fund is for the lighting that was passed last year to put into lighting. So that, that is available in their, in the capital restricted fund. If you chose not to use it for lighting, you could use, to use it for the bleachers. But that's what that money was originally allotted for, but you can choose to use it on however you want to use it. Other than that, it would have to come from fund balance.
There'd be that much less coming from fund balance if, if we utilize this.
If you use some of the furniture money, you would, just the rest would have to be picked up out of fund balance. And I don't have those in front, that, and those numbers, I could look, but it would take me a couple of minutes to look, but. Of what was left in the furniture line.
Further discussion? All right. Then we are voting on the motion that is on the floor to approve, the motion is to approve this. So let's go ahead and vote with Mr. Hansard?
No.
Ms. Jones?
No.
Ms. Hodge?
No.
Matthews?
No.
Mr. Coon?
No.
Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
Ms. Yinch?
Aye.
So that makes it one, five to three, it fails. Nay, five. Sorry, correcting my numbers here. So we know we'd get, we knew we'd get a no out of Jennifer.
You're welcome.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I guess the question is, do you want to just forget about the furniture right now till everything else is taken care of, or you decide about the bleachers, what are you going to do with those? Mr. Shores has put a lot of time in this, I know, of course, y'all have too. Maybe it's something you just want to drop now and not have to be concerned with at the next meeting and the next meeting. I think that would be appropriate, whatever you'd like to do.
I guess what I'm hearing, and, you know, is that this should just, you know, maybe go on next year's budget and call it good there and focus on the bleachers, I guess, where, where we're looking at the money going, you know? So however we fund that, so, and whenever that comes back up, so. That's, is it fine with everybody? Yep. All right. Our next agenda item is the, the laminate. And Mr. Shores, you want to dive into that?
Sure. Okay, last year, we went through phase one of the security laminate for all of our schools. That we, we tackled it. It was passed, I think it was around $300,000 worth of laminate, actually a little bit over $300,000. And they finished it. At that time, I was put to the task to, to move forward with finishing the job with all the, all the rest of the laminate. This does not complete the job, this does complete all the job of any windows that are at the ground level at the, the school buildings. It does not include the up, the, the top story, the built of, like the middle school that nobody could get to anyway, or, or possibly a, a window in the top of the gym that, that nobody could get to anyway. So this is completing all the ground level windows. It does include windows on the inside of the building as well, the, the door side lights in each one of the classrooms would be also getting the laminate. Once again, I want to remind you, this is laminate that, a, it is not ballistic glass, it is to, to keep it from shattering. This is, this is the same company that we used last year. And I'm hoping for any questions after you get a motion in a second and we'll go from there. And the price is $284,503 for the, for every bid. And that, that's the, the purchase as well as the install of the laminate.
Dr. Powell, you have a recommendation?
Yes, sir.
Wait, are you recommending this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
I do want to add one more thing. This would be coming from fund balance. And if the, this board decides to vote yes and go this direction, then there is a, an amendment that is later in the agenda. then there is a, an amendment that is later in the agenda that would need to be passed to, to take care of this.
So did you say this is the last phase of the film?
This would be, this is second phase. And if we decide to do any more, then we're talking about very, very minimal, very minimal.
All right, we need a motion to approve the laminate. We have a motion.
I make a motion to approve the laminate for security sakes.
All right, Ms. Yench makes the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Ms. Matthews seconds. Any discussion?
I have questions. I have lots of questions today. Is this, is this the reflective or can you see straight through this? Or is it just?
Okay, the reflective is, is for the reflective on the outside of the building. On the inside of the building, it would be a, a visible transparent. If it's the vinyl, the vinyl is supposed to be just for a, how do you say? It's not to block, it's to break up the subject.
I was surprised by that. I thought the graphics would be more harder to see through, I guess. Is that what it was supposed to look like?
What it is, is what it's supposed to have been like. And actually, one of the graphics was being decided by the principals. The company came back and said, if a principal said they wanted this color, but that color made it easier to see through, then the company would come back and say, you might not want to use that color because it's going to make it easier to see through. And you want to make it a little less, so you might want to use this color.
Okay, so we are happy with the stage one of the film then? Everything went?
I've been overall pleased with it.
Okay.
This is not bulletproof, though, right?
Correct, it's not ballistic glass, correct.
It's not bulletproof per se. But if you remember going back, if you remember seeing the films from the videos from the Covenant School shooting, when the perpetrator shot through the glass and it completely shattered and they were able to walk in, this will, the bullet will penetrate it, but the glass is not supposed to do anything except shatter. It should not break out and fall out like, is my understanding of that correct?
And this is actually one of the items that our Homeland Security, when they're doing their assessments of our buildings, and they keep asking, is this getting done? And all we can tell them is, we're in the process, it's going to be going to the board, and it's going to be up to the board to make the decision from there. But it is, it's to prevent shatter, it makes it shatterproof.
Like a windshield? Is that what?
It basically prevents it from being like a windshield.
It prevents it from being able to break and just fall on the ground.
This is, this is just another level of safety for our students. Should anything like this occur.
And if it's at a ground level, it will be on the inside and the outside of the window. It also has a bonding agent that is around the frame that holds it to the frame. It's, it's, it's good stuff. I don't know any other way to say it.
Okay, thank you.
Just for information, is there any funds from the state level now for safety or for security of schools, has all that run out?
Ms. Gardner and I looked at it and, and like the one grant that was out there was to take care of the push buttons. And there was, I forgot how much it was, but it was only enough to take care of a portion of two schools. It wasn't even, so I don't know of any other security.
So I mean, we're not getting any support from, from the state level anymore for safety measures, is that right?
I don't know of any other, any other security funds.
I think that we used to get a safety grant, but they rolled it in. Maybe you can elaborate on that, Ms. Melson.
So it was a separate grant last school year. And so that went away. So a lot of our state grants roll into, with TESA, but they don't really break it out and tell you that's where it's at. So when you ask them where the funding's at, they'll say, well, it's in there. But last year, we got a separate grant that you, that was just for safety. But this year, we did not get it separately. So when those questions were asked, we're required to spend so much on safety, but they don't really tell you this is how much or it's broken out by this amount.
So we're expected actually to take it out of our funds, TESA funds, to do anything?
And it's very small amounts, but it's nothing to this size. But yes, it's required to be, we have to spend so much every year on safety.
I think as Mr. Shores alluded to, if the board approves the laminate to be installed, the next item on the budget or the next one is to have a budget amendment to take care of this. Because it's not in the budget as we're speaking at this particular time.
Yeah, the budget amendment will be to pull it from fund balance.
Be a budget amendment if this passes.
This is for the safety of our kids and our staffs.
If this were to pass, what is the timeline for them completing it? Do we know?
I don't have the timeline right off. He's, he's got a, he's got several new crews and I'm thinking he's going to be able to kick on it pretty quick. He actually, there was a mistake. They, they almost started doing work and I was like, whoa, stop. They actually were sending somebody out to the middle school right before Christmas. And I had stopped them and said, we don't have approval, you can't. And there was a glitch there. So they wanted to start actually December.
That's a good sign.
Further discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote, Ms. Jones?
Aye.
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 And I will vote aye. So that passes eight to zero. So the budget amendment that was for the furniture then becomes moot because we voted that down, so.
I don't think we.
There's not one for furniture.
There's not one for furniture.
Oh. Oh, okay, I thought there was a, okay.
Furniture, we already allotted money in the budget for furniture.
All right, then, then you're going to have to explain budget item 141-2025-7 is the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. So this is normal budget movement around. I clean up the budget each year as we start approaching a new budget cycle. So that has already started on my side. So I looked at the budget and start cleaning up some line items in the budget. So on your second page is, there's explanation on what each of the five items are for, and I'll just briefly go through those. So the first, the first item you see on your budget amendment is actually number five, which is called best group. So this is a program that our district social worker started last year. She was able to, she received some donations from the community and she was able to start this program. And so this is her funding that we're rolling over from last year so she can continue to, continue to run her program throughout the entire district. So that's what number five is, and that's the first item you see on the budget. So I'm bringing those funds in, in a revenue or fund balance, and I'm bringing, and I'm putting them down into other student support. The next item you will see is an item that was approved in the last, in the last board meeting. It was for Mr. Skipper's EPP program. So I need to move some funds in, into those lines to be able to pay the person that we were, we approved to pay tuition for. So that's what number two is doing. So I'm taking it from his equipment line and I'm putting it into a tuition line. Number three, the bus garage had a tire changer that needed to be replaced. So we didn't have funds in that line to do that. So I'm moving funds from transportation, diesel, down into, down into transportation equipment. And then liability insurance. Number four, our property insurance came in higher this school year from our Tennessee Risk Management. So it didn't have funding in the Board of Education line to pull from. Otherwise, you wouldn't have seen this budget amendment. I had to pull from another line in the budget. So I pulled from, we had some additional kindergarten teachers that we didn't have to use this year. So I pulled from that line and pulled money from the teacher line and down, put it down into the liability insurance line. And I think that covers all of the items on this budget amendment. And I will take questions about it if you have any. I do will mention that it does affect restricted fund balance for 48902. The remaining items on this budget amendment are just moving around within the budget that was already there.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the budget amendment 141-2025-7?
I so move.
Mr. Cordell?
I'll second it.
Jones, all right. So the motion is to approve budget amendment 141-2025-7 as stated. Any discussion? Any questions for Ms. Melson? I mean, this is just normal cleanup and moving the budget items. We're in far enough into the budget year, you can make some adjustments. And where we're not spending and where we need money, you're just moving that around.
And I did realize just now that I've missed an item, so I'm so sorry. I did miss, we, at the, when we developed the budget last school year, we had psychologists and I budgeted those in the psychologist personnel line. Well, we, by the end of the school year, those psychologists left us. So it, we had to go with the option of having virtual psychologists. So if you look at the biggest item on here, I failed to talk about, and I'm so sorry for that, is $180,000. And I'm moving the money that we budgeted for the onsite psychologist down into where we would pay the virtual psychologist. So I'm so sorry, I forgot to mention that. But I want, didn't want this to pass without me saying something, so, or pass or fail without me saying something.
Questions?
I have a question. That, is that somebody that works remotely, virtual, virtual?
Yes.
Okay. And it's $180,000?
So we get a monthly bill from them. There's how many of, how many are there?
We have one, we have actually two in the app.
Okay.
And they're, they're expensive, but we get kids served by using, that's only an option.
So we don't have anybody in house?
I have one.
We do, okay.
So this is to cover hopefully the rest of the school year.
Okay.
This, and if, if I need to do additional funds, I'll have to bring another amendment to you later in the school year.
So this comes out of regular budget, not special ed funds?
So I moved from, I was able to move out of his special ed psychologist line where we would normally pay those people from and down into his contracted services is where we.
In special ed?
Yes, ma'am.
Further discussion? All right, the motion is to approve the amendment. Ms. Hodge?
Aye.
Ms. Bessius?
Aye.
Mr. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
Ms. Yench?
Aye.
Mr. Hansart?
Aye.
And I will vote aye, and Ms. Jones?
Aye.
All right, passes eight to zero. Now we get on to the budget amendment for the, for the laminate.
So this is the budget amendment for the laminate that you guys just passed. It does affect fund balance as already mentioned. So if you look at the bottom of this, the sheet, it will tell you under unassigned fund balance. So if you look at the very bottom, it makes, we go, it removes this from fund balance. It'll be 12.3 million for your unassigned fund balance.
Okay, we need a motion to approve 141-2025-8 to fund the laminate. Make a motion?
I so make the motion.
Ms. Yench?
Second it.
Ms. Jones? Discussion on the amendment to approve, or the budget amendment for the laminate, Any discussion or questions for Ms. Melson? Hearing none, let's go to Ms. Matthews.
Aye.
Mr. Coon?
Aye.
Cordell?
Aye.
Ms. Yench?
Aye.
Mr. Hansart?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Hodge?
Aye.
And I will vote aye, so that passes eight to zero. And our last agenda item is the budget update.
So this is the budget update through November. In November, we spent 5.1, I mean, we received $5.1 million, which brought us revenues of total revenues balanced to date of 17.7 million, which was 33.95% of budget compared to last year of 33.61%. $1.5 million of that revenue that we received for November was local and then 3.5 was state or federal, and then about $35,000 of other.
I'm not seeing the budget amendment on our, is anybody else seeing it on here? So we don't have copies of that, I guess.
You don't have copies of the budget update? Can make? Do you want me to print them all?
Yeah, that, does, everybody want to see it? I guess we should, yeah. Yeah, it just didn't make it on the, on the agenda here. Dead air time while we wait for copies. But we're voting on something we should see, right?
Took my hand and she won my heart.
Thank you for doing that. I don't know how it didn't get on there.
She said refresh her screens.
I tried that and it didn't work.
Precious, precious.
Oh, yeah, wow.
Oh, maybe it's, there it is, okay. Oh, well, we got hard copies anyways.
All right.
You ready for me now?
I guess we're ready now.
Okay. I'll start over. So November, we received $5.1 million in revenue, which brought us balance to date at 17.7 million, which was 33.95% of our budget compared to last year of 33.61%. 1.5 was local funding, 3.5 was state or federal funding, and then about $35,000 was other. So revenues are on track as far as budget right now. And then expenditures, we spent $4 million in November. Balance to date, we are 17.7 million. And then we've used 32.83% of budget compared to last year of 34.17. There's really no items that stand out on the budget expenditure line. If you have questions about those, I would gladly take those.
All right, so we need a motion to approve the budget amendment and then we can go to discussion. Or the budget update, I guess, not amendment, budget update.
I so move.
Ms. Jones?
One second.
Mr. Hansart, seconds. So the motion is to approve the budget update. I guess we don't have a date on this, but the year ending June 2021. don't have a date on this, but the year ending June 30th, 2025. So, any discussion? Questions for Ms. Melson?
I guess the only one I see that's kind of a, a big difference from last year to date is the line 72130, student, student support.
So, that's where we paid for our guidance counselors and they were paid for through ESER last year. So, ESER funded the guidance counselors and then out, this year they're back in our normal budget.
Oh, okay. So, we're having to pick up a lot of those ESER-funded positions, aren't we?
Well, ESER allows us to supplant and so that's what we did. We, we paid for our guidance counselors because it was allowable expense. So, we paid for our guidance counselors with ESER funds.
If you remember, that's how we actually paid for the laminate last year.
That's how we paid for, we used the money from guidance last year to pay for the first phase of the laminate last year.
The new reality, I guess. Any further discussion?
So, April, our total expenditure line in the amended budget, 54 million, that's roughly 2 million over the income line of 52, 54 million roughly, and the revenue line is 52 million. So, roughly about 2 million dollars exceeding our income.
So, that's why I looked at the moment. That is the, okay, so if we think back about a budget that was, we passed back in the spring. So, revenues are, were very conservative at the time and then expenditures are always worst-case scenario. So, I don't think we'll hit the 2 million, but obviously there's things that could happen between now and the, you know, end of the school year. But yes, at, at the moment in time, our budget says that and that's with our, our original budget and revised budget. So, anything that was amendment was done, so like for after-school programming, that was added in after we passed the normal budget. So, yes, so that's the way right now the budget is laid out, but I don't think we will hit based on, revenues are trending very well and then expenditures, if you look at expenditures, they're down from last year. So, I, I don't think we'll hit the 2 million, but that's just my, my, um, yes, as of right now.
Okay. Thank you, April.
You're welcome.
Further discussion? Are we ready for vote? Mr. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
Ms. Hinch?
Aye.
Mr. Hanser?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Hodge?
Aye.
Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
I will vote aye. That passes eight to zero. That concludes most of our action items. So, items for discussion. Mr. Cordell, we can start with you.
I know we've got a lot of items coming up on our work session. That's gonna be really informative and looking forward to that, but I don't really have any items to bring up tonight for discussion.
Okay. Yes, we have a work session scheduled for January 28th as we mentioned earlier. So...
That's at four o'clock, I believe.
Yes. And Melissa did update all the committee meetings and everything on the, on the website and I, I think so. Okay. Ms. Hinch?
I don't have anything tonight.
Mr. Hanser?
I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
Ms. Jones?
The only thing I can say, y'all made the right call with the, with the snow deal because there, there was even some today, believe it or not.
We did have two problems around the schools. One at the middle school, that's on the side, I guess the north side where the sun doesn't shine. And our people went out there with, with our tractor and our front-end loader with a blade and could do nothing with it for all practical purposes. We did get a hold of Superintendent Bartlett with the, with the Coffey County Highway Department and he came out and salted that area. And also we had one similar to that at New Union, which wasn't hardly as bad because it was pretty much flat. I went out this afternoon and checked them and for the most part, it was all gone. There, there may be a little water freeze tonight, but the ice as it was today was not there. So, and Mr. Bartlett may charge us if he does, we'll just have to pay it, but it was worth, I think, that because especially at the middle school, it was where cars come in and to drop students off in the morning and pick them up in the afternoon. Fortunately, decide where they come out, where the little hill is, didn't have anything on it. So, that wasn't a problem. But it, we had two roads, of course, that we've talked about that were not passable and I have not talked to Mr. Morris today. So, I don't know what the status of those are, whether they're still that way or not, to be honest with you. But if it is, he'll make the contact that he did this morning, hear Matt Warren call those homes and tell the students. And I don't know whether students got to school or not. We haven't checked to see.
They did.
We'll find out.
I know.
Sir?
They, I checked with Mr. Morris this afternoon and he said they made it.
Okay. Very good.
Ms. Hodge?
No, sir. I think I've talked more this meeting than I have most of the others combined. So, I am finished.
You did well. Okay. Ms. Matthews?
Just an extra thank you to Deerfield for the charcuterie box and the sweet students and teachers at Hickerson for the plant. So, it's very much appreciated. Thank you guys.
Mr. Coon?
The only thing I have is what Holly said. I, you know, second that and we really appreciate the, the thoughts. Thank you.
I would like to thank Ms. Melson for juggling the, her schedule between two places. Did, did you do okay down there?
Yeah, it passed. It just, thank her for having computer issues. It was, took longer than it should have down there, but yes, it was, it was fun.
Okay, good. Yeah, that's gonna get in your exercise running back and forth. All right. Committee reports. Do we have any committees? We did have some committees, but yeah.
There were two, two committees. Temple Projects and Budget Committee Met.
And just, yeah. Anything come out of that? I think the Budget Committee was more just meeting, right?
I'm not chairman of it. I, I let whoever the chair is talk about it.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not, not on that one anymore either. Okay, so...
Mr. Powell, you're chairman of it, don't you?
Of which one?
Robert, I guess.
I think Robert's the chair of the Budget, yeah, committee. Yeah. So, all right.
We had our Student Ambassador reports already and I hope you thoroughly enjoyed the show today, but pretty calm actually. So, yeah. Okay, then we'll wrap up with the Director's Report. So, Dr. Powell?
A couple, three things. I have enrollment numbers for you. I did not get those out to the packet, but I'll have those numbers. I'll give them to you in just a few minutes. Would you like to pass them out? If you don't mind, yes. These are as of today. And just for your information more than anything else, you did get a copy of all the meeting dates, committee meetings and so forth. There'll be no, we're out of school on Monday, this coming Monday for Martin Luther King Day. Keep in mind the community meetings that are gonna be taking place on the 27th. And Dr. Grissom has asked that you only attend the meeting that you were invited to attend. And that's about all I can tell you right now. We've got several, three or four different groups that are involved in it, but that's, that's her information. I don't know what she's gonna be presenting or anything, but we'll find out at that particular time. The Scope Program, some of you mentioned that. I know this is a program where we have, I think, four high school students that are, have been or are being selected, whichever the case may be, be going to Belmont University sometime in the spring. And what this is, it's, it's a program where students actually become board members and they bring them all together. They have about five or six various topics that may come up. The TSBA comes up with the topics. They break into groups. Those groups split up into two groups, one's for and one's against. And they throw things, argue back and forth as to which is good and which is bad and what would be the good part of it and the bad part of it. And then they meet back as a group, they have a consensus on it. And then the final vote is, and we'll get that vote, you will get a little bit later on, whatever the topics are, what the entire group voted on to either approve or disapprove. And I don't know what the topics are this year. I'm sure there'll be one on cell phones to come up. As you well know, I know that's a topic that's on one of our work agendas. The State Department of Educ, or the State Senate and legislators have a new law or have proposed a law with cell phones. And we were talking about it today in staff meeting. It somewhat puts the policy back in the Board of, Local Board of Education, but they basically telling you what you gotta put in your policy. So, we'll have to look and see what that, what that amounts to at some point in time. But those will be coming up. I guess that's pretty much all of it. Oh, yeah. Mr. Ballard, I don't know whether this is the time and place for it, but I think it's something that needs to be taken care of. In our 12 o'clock meeting on the 27th, we'll be having a group of local board mayor and aldermen, county commissioners and so forth, business people, other people in the community that have been invited to that particular meeting. And Dr. Grissom said it's, you need to have a luncheon meeting because it's at 12 o'clock. So, we're gonna try to prepare some kind of meal. And I know Melissa's been working very hard to get some things done, I think.
I think Holly's worked on that too, yeah.
So, I guess at some point in time, I don't, whether y'all have enough information or not, but it, somebody needs to tell us to decide what to do with it. If that makes any sense to you. Holly, you wanna pitch into that?
I just got a couple of, or I, I got a quote today from the Mercantile on their sandwich slider combo meals. It did look like they came in below what our other quotes showed. And they also included the drinks with that. And they said they would deliver out here to central office. I did check with Culinary Arts also and they served us such a great Christmas dinner. I thought it was worth checking with them, but they're more set up for smaller groups. They just don't have the, I think, the refrigerator space and all that to store a lot of food for big groups of people. So, I think it's just a matter of all the board members kinda weighing in and saying what they prefer to have to eat that day. Or, you know, you guys, I, I don't, you know, I got the quote from the Mercantile today. It did come in lower than any of the others, but it's the will of us to, what, what's decided there from what, from what I know. All, all of that was put in an email today.
Yes.
To let everybody know what was included and what the price would be. So, and, and I offered to come help. Melissa was set up, cleaned up that kind of thing.
I think all of us up here will pitch in to get whatever we gotta get done.
Yeah, I can help.
Our, our SVPs are due by Friday, so we should know the, the exact number.
Yes, sir. We should know the exact number. You know, I think there's been maybe 115 or 20 individuals that have been asked to come.
Yeah, we can't send all those people in here.
But as of today, I think that only been about a half a dozen respond back. So, hopefully there'll be more to coming in this pad this week. And Melissa's taking care of it. They're supposed to be responding back to her and we'll know Friday or at least Tuesday of next week. We're out on Monday, but we'll have an idea, a good idea of how many we're gonna be feeding. And it's not gonna be extravagant, you know, just be a slight thing. And right now, as, as Holly said, that, and we didn't really go hoot and take bids on it as such. We just asked a couple of catering people and a couple of other places, you know, if we had to have this much, what would it cost us? And we've got three or four different figures. And right now, the Mercantile is, is the lowest bid, I guess you might say, or the lowest number that we have to accommodate us. So, you know, unless something changes, that, that's probably who we'll go with.
Yeah. We'll get a consensus from everybody.
For us to make that, I say us, myself and Melissa and Mr. Ballard, if that's okay. Once we get those numbers from how many we're gonna be having to come in.
All right.
Sir?
That, that sounds good to me. So, we'll, we'll get on it. Usually if there's food involved, everybody's right on it.
Holly, I sort of appreciate you and Melissa and Tom and everybody working on this.
You're very welcome.
Really wasn't working on it. So, all right. So, we need to entertain a motion to, to adjourn. Ms. Cordell?
I second.
And who seconded?
I did.
All right. Ms. Hinch? All right, everybody signify their acceptance by standing up by yes and leave.